Members. Good afternoon, we have a call room. It's the appointed time. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Special Finance Committee. The meetings will run until seven o'clock this evening. I'd like to remind members, all the questions must be directly related to the estimates of expenditure. If members would like to follow up on the replies given by the administration, please quote the reply serial number. If members cannot follow up on the written reply from the administration, you can submit a written question before the meeting finishes today. All the questions must be directly related to the administration's replies. I welcome Mr. Eric Zhang, Secretary for Constitutional and Mainland Affairs and his team to this session. I'll invite the secretary to walk us through the opening remarks. Members who would like to speak, please press the button. Before the secretary speaks, I'd like to remind members some rules. In our meeting, four minutes, four minutes question and answers included. Please manage your time well, allow some time for the administration to respond to your questions. If members ask too many questions in a session, I will exercise my chairman's discretion to invite the secretary to take part of the questions. For the remaining questions, I will ask the secretary to follow up with members after the meeting. Secretary, you can reply in brief and allow some time for the members to ask questions. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to introduce to members the highlights of the estimates of expenditure in twenty twenty four to twenty five of the CMAB. In this financial year, the CMAB is allocated a total of eight hundred and eighty-three million provision. This is the highlight of our work. One, the improved electoral system. The government improved the electoral system, improved district governance, and reformed the district councils in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty three respectively. Afterwards, in the past few years, a couple of important elections were held, including legislature general election, CE election, legislature by-election, as well as the District Council General Election. The new district council members has already assumed office on the first of January. These five elections were completed in a fair, just, and honest manner. The principle of patriots administering Hong Kong was implemented on various levels of district governance, ensuring the administration of Hong Kong by patriots for the good governance and lasting stability. We will implement the principle of patriots administering Hong Kong by adhering to the improved electoral system in long run. We will also take stock of our valuable experience with the elections and continue to enhance election arrangements with the Electoral Affairs Commission, EAC, and the Registration and Electoral Office, REO, including reviewing existing legislation and election arrangements, further introducing technologies to streamline elections and enhance efficiency in a fair and just manner in order that elections are held in a more efficient and user-friendly manner. In addition, we will step up publicity so the different quarters of the community are up to speed on the new election system and the importance of implementing patriots administering Hong Kong. The Chief Executive announced in his policy address last year the rolling out of patriotic education and the establishment of Working Group on Patriotic Education under the Constitution and Basic Law Promotion Steering Committee led by the Chief Secretary for Administration. The working group was established on the eighth of August, on the eighth of April. It is mainly responsible for coordinating different government departments and NGOs in the promotion of patriotic education, aligning with the contents of the Patriotic Education Laws of People's Republic of China, enhancing the national education, history, and culture of our country, and promoting patriotism. The working group will work on the promotion of patriotic education on different fronts, such as school education, local community, history, politics, economy, culture, media, and so on. We are preparing to convene the first meeting. The Constitution and the Basic Law together form the constitutional basis and order of the Hong Kong SAR, providing a sound legal basis and underpinning of constitutional order. We will continue to promote the Constitution and the Basic Law in a diversified manner, including the extensive use of online social media platforms, publicity events in the community, more TV and radio programs, in order to step up publicity for different target groups such as students, teachers, teenagers, and civil servants. On the, uh, on mainland affairs, the Chief Executive set up the Steering Group on Integration into National Development in end twenty twenty two and chaired the group himself, assisted by the three Secretaries of Departments of the Deputy Chairs. This working group will take forward all the work on integrating into the national development of our country, including aligning proactively with the Fourteen Five Year Plan, GBA development, and high-quality development of the Belt and Road Initiative. Cooperation with different regions in the mainland will also be strengthened to add considerable impetus for development to Hong Kong. The Steering Committee adopts a three-pronged approach of conducting research, planning, and coordination, and will continue to formulate and implement various measures from the top level in a pragmatic and responsible manner to facilitate a win-win and beneficial situation. This is how the Steering Group will carry out its work. This will further enhance our alignment with national strategies to facilitate the overall development of Hong Kong. On the development of Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau GBA, the SAR government will continue to liaise with different counterparts in the mainland as well as in Macau to make good use of the collaboration mechanism between Hong Kong-Shenzhen and Hong Kong-Guangdong. This is in order to achieve a win-win situation. We want to develop the GBA into a world-class Bay Area that is suitable for living, employment, and tourism. Last year, the Central People's Government issued the overall development plan for the Tianhai-Shenzhen-Hong Kong Modern Service Industry Cooperation Zone and a three-year action plan for the development of international business environment in the Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau GBA. The aim is to expedite the high-quality development of the Bay Area and implement the strategic tactics as ordered by the Central People's Government. The Hong Kong SAR government attaches great importance to these planning documents. We have already proactively and promptly liaised with the Guangdong Municipal and Shenzhen Municipal Governments. Under the principle of one country, two systems, Hong Kong is the only world-class city combining the international advantages and the, um, in, and the advantages we have on the back of China. We need to give full play to our distinct advantages of enjoying strong support of the motherland and being closely connecting to the world to promote development opportunities for the people of Hong Kong. We need to assume the role of a super connector and a super value adder. That is how we can bring people, money, investment or money in, and at the same time, we can also go global. This is our dual-platform role. So we can achieve the new positioning of the GBA. At the same time, the Hong Kong SAR government attaches great importance to telling the good stories of the Bay Area. We make good use of traditional media, internet, social media platforms, physical activities as well as exhibitions to attract foreign talents, enterprises, as well as capital. We want to attract these to come to Hong Kong for development. That is how we can seize upon the important opportunities of GBA development. We'd also like to, through the Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau Greater Bay Area Development Promotion Centre, organize different kinds of activities. We'd like to promote the developments of the Bay Area. We also want to get an understanding of their needs in order to provide them with the most suitable assistance. The Hong Kong SAR government has already set up KPIs and will enhance these KPIs. That is, this year, we will hold different promotional activities and exchange sessions. This year, we have seen attendance of over eight thousand eight hundred people and not fewer than one thousand one hundred entrepreneurs and companies. We will continue to work hard on this front in order to promote the developments or development opportunities of the GBA. In twenty twenty four to twenty five, the five mainland offices and the eleven liaison units under the mainland offices had the, well, have the expenditure of three hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. Different offices will continue to deepen the collaboration on different fronts with different cities and monopolists and different regions in the mainland, including commercial, trading, INT, as well as exchanges between young people. Together with different organizations, chambers of commerce, enterprises, student organizations, we will maintain a close dialogue with them and provide them with suitable assistance. We will also reflect to the mainland authorities the needs and the views of Hong Kong people living in the mainland. We will also proactively get in touch with the target enterprises and talents in order to attract them to come to Hong Kong for development. On the other hand, we will make good use of online and offline platforms to step up publicity. We would like to promote the development opportunities that Hong Kong boasts and the distinctive advantages Hong Kong has on the back of the principle of one country, two systems, so that we can tell the good stories of Hong Kong in the mainland market, and we can also promote the mega-events in Hong Kong in order to attract more mainland visitors to come to Hong Kong. I'd like to tell you some more about the EOC as well as the other organization, that is PCPD. The EOC is responsible for the implementation of four anti-discrimination laws. In twenty twenty four to twenty five, the provision is one hundred and thirty-one million dollars. Ms. Linda Lam, the, um, new chairperson of the EOC is also with us. She is responsible for leading the EOC to promote public education as well as other events in order to promote the culture of mutual respect, diversity, as well as inclusiveness. That is how we can foster the social harmony and stability in Hong Kong. The PCPD has a provision of eighty, uh, well, I mean ninety-seven million dollars. The PCPD has combated a lot of doxing behavior. As of the thirty-first of March, the PCPD has already initiated criminal investigation into three hundred suspected doxing cases. Forty-six arrests have been conducted, a total of forty-seven people have been arrested. The PCPD has also issued a total of one thousand nine hundred decision notices on the online platforms. That is how we can promote the digital development of enterprises. Chair, Chairman, this is the end of my introduction. My team and I are more than willing to take members' questions. We welcome valuable opinions and suggestions from members. Thank you, Chairman. Eleven members have pressed a button to request to speak. They are in order Dr. Johnny Ng, Professor Priscilla Leng, Ms. Dorian Kong, Ms. Nixie Lam, Mr. Chen Yong, Reverend Peter Kun, Dr. Tan Yuhe, Dr. Su Changwen, Mr. Li Tongkua, Ms. Dari Lee, and Dr. Teg Chi Yun. Four minutes question and answers. Dr. Johnny Ng. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on replied oh-four-six. That's about, um, our link with Taiwan. The relevant communication with Taiwan is, um, under the CMAB. Will you consider deploying more resources to support these community organizations to strengthen the collaboration between Taiwan and Hong Kong? Taiwan is an inalienable part of China. Do you have any plan to help Taiwan entrepreneurs or enterprises to come to Hong Kong or the mainland market or to help, um, students to go to the mainland for exchange? Thank you.
Two questions about Taiwan. Secretary, please. Thank you. Now, about Taiwan. You know what's going on in the cross-strait relations? So in May twenty twenty one, our Taiwan office suspended operation. We don't have a particular funding scheme for community groups. The Taiwan office has suspended operation. But then in special cases or in cases of emergencies, if Hong Kong people get into problems in Taiwan, we provide assistance. Now on trade, the Trade Development Council maintains an office in Taiwan. If needed, we can work on promotion and give assistance. What about students, exchange programs for students? If needed, we provide appropriate assistance. Next, Professor Priscilla Leng. Chairman, oh-oh-four and oh-oh-five-six, oh-oh-four-oh. I support the Working Group on Patriotic Education. Are there key performance indicators for the work? So my question is about the Constitution and the Basic Law. But we don't expect students at every grade to learn everything in one go. I suggest different stages. So primary students should learn something about their country's history. Primary students should learn that they are Chinese. So the basics, such as the national anthem, the national flag, things that can provide an emotional attachment should be taught. And we need to have a performance indicator on that. So let's start with primary schools. People at the primary level should learn about Chinese history. When I was a primary student, I was taught about the early Republican period in China's history. People did things for their country. Now, at the secondary school stage, we should start teaching the Basic Law and the Constitution. I teach the Basic Law and the Constitution at the university. At the secondary s- school, students should learn about one country, two systems. We in Hong Kong live in a capitalist society. The mainland follows a socialist system. The mainland is developing well, it's a quality socialist system. So at the secondary school stage, we need to teach students one country, two systems, differences in the systems. This is also where students need to get an accurate understanding. They should know enough to pass the civil service examination. Now, at the university level, we should be training leaders. These are supposed to be, university students are supposed to be people who are patriotic, people with a global perspective. University students need to learn about the overall developments of the country. These students at the university level should be well-informed about our country and also Hong Kong. So these are my suggestions. Can I get a response from the secretary? So this is about promotion of the Constitution and the Basic Law. Thank you. The government sets great store by the education about the Constitution, the Basic Law, and also national security education alongside patriotic education. The Chief Executive said on the National Security Education Day that we in Hong Kong need to foster mainstream values centered around one country, two systems, and also consistent with the ideas of patriotism and love for Hong Kong. So at the Basic Law, Constitution and Basic Law Promotion Steering Committee, there's a working group specifically for teachers and students. Just then, Professor Leng mentioned primary education, that we have a subject. Citizenship, Society, and Economics, we incorporate elements of the national security law. At the secondary school level, there is citizenship and social development. Again, we incorporate elements of the Constitution, the Basic Law, and the national security law. Element of patriotism have been included in the curriculum for students. So that's covered. Now, the Working Group on Patriotic Education, the group has been formed recently. We will have a meeting soon. Members of the working group will have great insights to share. One key area is education. The work will include effective teaching of values and knowledge that will inspire patriotism. Ms. Dorian Kong.
Oh-four-three. This is about the Personal Privacy, Person, Privacy Commissioner for Personal Data. A question from Mr. Martin Yao. So the question is about how do we better talk to seniors to raise their awareness of personal privacy? The reply says talks in the community and also advertisements in MTL stations, radio, TV, and on the internet. Those are old channels. Are there new ways to spread the message to seniors? We need to do better in getting the message across to seniors. The reply simply sets out the old ways. Mr. Martin, I also asked about the expenditure and establishment. I don't think that's answered. How much would it cost to engage in publicity directed at seniors? Now, the PDPO has only been amended twice over the years. Have we set aside enough resources? Given that technology moves quickly, especially AI. So have we set aside resources to amend the PDPO? Now I turn to oh-six-four. The question mentions reviewing electoral arrangements. Now on declaring the election advertisement expenses and other election expenses, how can we make declaration easier? And can we go electronic with those procedures? That can make life easier for candidates and that can also save money for the Electoral Affairs Commission. So two questions, one for the PDP, Personal Privacy Commissioner, and the other one, the other question has to do with election expenses. Now on the point about the PDPO, the Personal Commissioner for Personal Data can tell us more. Now on publicity and education for seniors. We've been working tirelessly to try to think of ways to do better for various reasons. Seniors spend their time at elderly centers or at home, so we hold events, activities at elderly centers. My colleagues and I go to those elderly centers. We tell seniors about ways to protect their personal data. Now we also have a themed campaign. It's a campaign about anti-scam messages. We have made clips. The clips will be shown on TV and also on online platforms and also on MTR trains. At bus stops, we will also put anti-scam messages so that seniors can see them. We will also continue to hold talks and seminars. Those talks draw seniors. We will also hold online events. So seniors don't have to attend the activities in person, they can access the information online. In our reply to oh-four-three, we don't set out the establishment or expenses, but in oh-three-two, we do set out the establishment. There are eleven officers working on education and publicity. We take an all-round approach to education and publicity. We target not just seniors. So those eleven officers work on publicity covering everyone. Now on amending the PDPO, we have been reviewing the framework of the PDPO. We have some directions in mind. First, introducing a mandatory notification mechanism for data leakage. And second, regulating handlers of data. And three, requiring bodies that use personal data to make policies about data retention and also reviewing the penalties, bringing in administrative fines. We've been working on this area and we have set aside money for this purpose. Now declaration of election expenses. We can get our colleagues from the REO to tell us more. Thank you. On the election advertisement, the current requirement is that within three working days of putting up the election ad, the text of the ad and the expenses need to be submitted for public inspection. In-person submission is allowed. The candidate can also use the central platform maintained by the REO. So the documents can be submitted electronically. For candidates with their own online platform, those candidates can also put the text of the ad and the documents on their own platform. So there are electronic ways to provide documents about election advertisements. Now for election expenses, we want to make life easier for candidates. Now for a candidate who has already submitted a copy of the election ad, the candidate can download that information when they declare the election expenses. Now on further electronic means of declaring election ad expenses, we are following up on this. Ms. Nixie Lam. Thank you, Chairman. Oh-one-two. Business opportunities. In the mainland, more than a hundred talks were held to promote business opportunities, but the locations were mostly tier-one cities. How does a government pick locations for those talks? Will tier-two and tier-three cities be also covered? Some such cities become popular all of a sudden. So have we underestimated the potential of tier-two and tier-three cities? Oh-three-three. This has to do with the promotion of the Basic Law and the Con, and the Constitution. So it's just online publicity for people outside Hong Kong. Can we make clips? People overseas may be using TikTok. Can we make short clips to promote the Basic Law? For people outside Hong Kong, they may not be aware of the Basic Law and they know nothing about the Basic Law. So when people criticize us, they make uninformed criticism. Making short videos can help inform people. There were clips available in Chinese and English. Why not put up those materials as well? CMAB oh, four, eight. And this is a GBA Development Promotion Office. Sharing sessions were held for youth entrepreneurship. Those websites often provide links to government websites. That makes it hard for people navigate and find the information they need. Can we provide a simple way for them to access the information they need?
So three questions from the administration. We have the secretary. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Nixie Lam. First of all, regarding seminars in the mainland, often times they are held in tier-one cities. Yes, we will hold similar seminars in tier-two and tier-three cities as well. We have a total of five mainland offices, under which we also have eleven liaison units. They are scattered throughout the territory. We identify the potential of collaboration with us or whether there are chances of um talents or enterprises coming to Hong Kong for development. So we target these cities to step up publicity. Regarding the promotion of the Constitution and the Basic Law, yes, at present, we do have different publicity events. For example, we have promotional materials in relation to the Constitution Day in three languages, namely Cantonese, English, and Putonghua. All these are prepared. Of course, Ms. Nixie Lam, your suggestion is very good. We'll try to promote our publicity events in different languages in order to reach a wider audience. We will also promote these messages both online and offline so that our messages will reach all corners of the world. Regarding the Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau GBA Development Promotion Center, on the website, there are hyperlinks, and there are also short videos. These enable members of the public to have a better understanding of the situation in an easy-to-understand manner. We have short video clips. Bite-sized information will help members of the public to get an understanding of the situation. Next, Mr. Chen Yong.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on oh, five, two. Eighteen thousand voters or so did not register successfully. Eight thousand nine hundred um voters had problem with the address proof. If sharing of information is available, that is, a citizen only needs, only needs to report the address to the government once. This will make things easier for them. In twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, do you have any estimate on the promotion of patriotic education? We have a working group led by Mr. Li. In this regard, do you have any plan about resource deployment? Or will it be absorbed under the promotion of the Constitution of the Basic Law? Regarding the ties between mainland and Taiwan, will the CMAB be well-prepared? Well, that is when Hongkongers come across any difficulties in the mainland or in Taiwan. Is the CMAB always ready to help? Thank you. Thank you, Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Chen. Regarding voter registration, at present, we have I Am Smart. That is a platform for citizens to register as voters. We'll continue to look into more convenient means to allow members of the public to register. On the expenses on patriotic education, we have already set up a working group on patriotic education. The CMAB will act as a secretariat. The relevant expenses are absorbed under the CMAB. Regarding the recommended policies suggested by the working group, these policies will be absorbed under different policy bureaus. Regarding Taiwan, of course, we'll keep a close watch on the ties between the two straits. Where the situation allows, we'll resume normal exchanges and collaboration. At present, for Hongkongers running into emergencies or special circumstances in Taiwan, there are channels through which Hongkongers can seek assistance. Next, Reverend Peter Kuhn. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on CMAB oh, three, seven. This question is about the arrangements of different voting stations, especially for people in the mainland who can't come to Hong Kong for voting. In the reply, the administration said that they would continue to have regard to the actual situation and proactively consider different arrangements to deal with the situation. I've heard from many Hongkongers in the mainland. They asked whether they had a chance to vote by post. For example, in Guangdong Province, it may be easier or more convenient for them to do so. But when they are out of the Guangdong Province, the situation may not be the same. Secretary, voting arrangements for Hong Kong people who can come back to Hong Kong, that is how they can vote when they are in mainland. Thank you. For Hong Kong people working and living in the mainland, there are indeed a large number of these people in the mainland. There are also a large number of voters in the mainland, and they'd like to proactively take part in the elections in Hong Kong. They'd like to fulfill their civic responsibilities. In the district council elections, we had near-boundary polling, polling stations during the epidemic. There were also BCP polling stations. Going forward, we'll have regard to the actual situation and see how we can provide convenience to Hong Kong people living in the mainland so that they can also take part in the elections. Regarding the suggestion floated by Reverend Peter Kuhn, that is casting a vote by mail or by post, there are different concerns at play. For example, whether the voters cast their vote voluntarily. So we need to tread cautiously before we roll out these arrangements. But all in all, we will look into different arrangements to make it convenient for voters in the mainland to cast their vote. Next, Dr. Tan Yuhang.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on CMAB oh, four, eight. That's about Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau GBA Development Promotion Center. The administration's reply mentioned the work on the Promotion Center. There were three main fronts of work. Well, excuse me, it should be oh, four, eight. Right, it's about the um Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau GBA Development Promotion Center. The administration painted a broad brush. It's quite a general reply. The administration painted the picture with a broad brush. It's been a year since twenty twenty-three. Hongkongers looking for employment, setting up business, they run into different difficulties in the mainland. Do you have any targeted assistance that can be provided to these people? Can you help them solve these problems in a targeted manner? The Development Promotion Center will help different groups to go to the GBA for exchange. Some of them may not be um Chinese-speaking students. They are NCS students. So when these students go to the GBA, there are difficulties. Some study tours have been called to a halt. Can we ask the Development Promotion Center to help them um in this regard? That is to have a smooth exchange? Secretary, mainly about Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau GBA Development Promotion Center. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask Ms. Mei Cie Chan Commissioner for the development of the Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau GBA to take this question. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Secretary. The Promotion Center will continue to hold sharing sessions, exchange sessions, to help Hong Kong people in the mainland, especially young people, to help them with problems like employment and starting their own business. That straddles different areas such as the trend of development of mainland cities, business environment in mainland cities, any policies, facilitation measures for young entrepreneurs, sharing of entrepreneurs in the mainland, and how, how they can help young people plan their career path. We will continue to deepen our work on this front. Dr. Tan Yuhang mentioned NCS students. That is non-Chinese-speaking students. We can get in touch with Dr. Tan after the meeting. If need be, we are more than happy to render assistance to students who'd like to study and develop in the GBA. We are most interested to know how we can help them. Thank you. Next, Dr. So Changwing.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on CMAB oh, four, eight. Just now, the secretary gave a reply and said that the development of the GBA is high on the agenda. Regarding the Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau GBA Development Promotion Center, it details a lot of different functions and measures such as working with mainland counterparts and groups to provide assistance, to provide services, and so on. There are many such points. In recent years, there are many interactions between mainland cities and Hong Kong. Our collaboration has been deepened to an extent that wasn't seen in the past. So I don't think you are doing sufficiently in this regard. Regarding the Development Promotion Center, there are only five staff members. I'm not sure if it's incorrect information for the expenditure between twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. The figure stands as six point six eight million dollars. Given such a substantial amount of work and the pressing needs, I don't think the five staff members will suffice. They have a lot on their plate. So is it necessary to upgrade the establishment of this office, I mean, the Development Promotion Center? Uh, well, I know you will say that you have a mainland office, and you also have Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau GBA Development Office, which is already um always ready to give assistance. But the Development Promotion Center will independently roll out different projects. That's exactly why I asked this question.
CMAB. Now, I turn to CMAB oh, two, eight. There are five mainland offices, one liaison unit. That covers different places in the mainland. Those offices reach out to people in the mainland. But given the new circumstances, when the Hong Kong SL government needs to make a decision, do those mainland offices provide advice and information to the government? Does the government follow the advice and information provided by those mainland officers? So two questions. One, about the GBA Promotion Office. It's about the staff establishment. I thank Dr. So for supporting our work. We want to do better, too. Now, first, the GBA Development Promotion Office. We set up the office last year. We want that office to engage in promotion. Some people wondered how the Promotion Office differs from the Guangdong Office in taking forward the work. We set up the Promotion Office last year. We make the decisions and plans in Hong Kong, and then the implementation falls to the Promotion Office. We look at the circumstances and the resources. For now, there are five staff members at the office. Those staff members work very hard on many initiatives. If needed, we will get our Guangzhou office to help, and if needed, we will see if there's room for adjusting the establishment at the Promotion Center. The Promotion Center is very popular among the Hong Kong people and business leaders in the mainland. The same goes for funding. If needed, we can put resources to that Promotion Center from the CMAB. Now, for our mainland officers, our mainland officers talk to the authorities in those mainland cities to find out about the latest developments in the political scene, the economy, and the cultural scene. The mainland officers then give that information to us so that our policies are more in line with what's going on in the mainland. We receive monthly updates from our mainland officers. Our government then considers whether adjustments are needed based on the information from the mainland. The mainland officers The mainland officers have been giving us helpful information. Mister Leitong Quo.
Thank you Chairman. CMAB oh six oh. The question is about the District Council election expenses. The government's reply says for the preparation and the completion of the election, the revised estimate is nine hundred and ninety-two million dollars. I did some research on my own. I looked at some figures from twenty nineteen to twenty. I looked at the Special Finance Committee replies back then. A reply to a question from Mr. Ari Lee. That question had to do with the expenses of the twenty nineteen District Council election. That figure was four hundred and sixty-two million dollars. This means when we look at the difference and that's five hundred and sixty-six million dollars. Twenty fifteen District Council ordinary election, actual expenditure, four hundred and eighteen million dollars. So we can see normally a District Council election should cost somewhere around four hundred million dollars. But the twenty twenty-one District Council election, while twenty twenty-three District Council election cost nine hundred million dollars. I looked at the breakdown too. Staff cost two hundred and thirty-five million dollars. Last time it was a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. So almost two hundred million dollars extra. The breakdown is similar to the previous elections with an extra of storage. This time it's six hundred million dollars and last time it was three hundred billion dollars. So again, massive increase in the other expenses. So can the government tell us why did the twenty twenty-three District Council election cost so much more than previous elections? Secretary please. In twenty twenty-one, we improved our electoral system. And public elections of all kinds, we have improved our system. We have implemented the Patriots Administering Hong Kong Principle. We need to get that right. As members are aware, over the past few elections, we have done much better in terms of efficiency and the time the processes took. We incorporated new elements at the last District Council election such as the three district committees and also the near boundary election stations, there were selfie spots. We also had a much larger number of ballot issuing counters. We also did much in staff training. All that required manpower. In running an election, a major expenditure is on the manpower. We had more than thirty thousand people working at the twenty twenty-three District Council election. From my experience, in the twenty nineteen District Council election, I queued for more than an hour, I was still outside the polling station. But at the last electoral election and the twenty twenty-three District Council election, I could walk straight in, I could cast my vote and then I could leave. More than a million voters and our new arrangement saved much time for the voters. We spent more on the election. But that also brought much greater benefits to society. And that's on top of the benefits from the system where patriots administer Hong Kong. Of course, we will make prudent use of public funds in running elections. But I want to highlight the point that we spent that money, but that was necessary and it was worth it. Thank you, Ms. Ari Lee.
CMAB oh two oh. It's about the Greater Bay Area. Outside the GBA, there are people looking to set up family offices. Hong Kong also wants to attract people from the mainland to become Hong Kong residents and invest in Hong Kong. So apart from publicity and sharing information, does the CMAB set key performance indicators for mainland offices? And how can the CMAB work with the Trade Development Council and Invest Hong Kong so that the CMAB plays a bigger role in growing the economy? So this is about the economy in the GBA. Ms. Mei Si Chan.
Thank you. We work with strategic partners such as the Trade Development Council and the Invest Hong Kong. Say for the TDC, we organize goal GBA development days, we hold seminars, one-on-one consultation sessions, business consultations. That's how we tell stakeholders about the opportunities in the GBA. We also work with Invest Hong Kong in late March. We teamed up with Invest Hong Kong to visit Toronto in Canada. We reached out to Canadian business people to tell them about the advantages in the GBA including Hong Kong. We will visit different places such as ASEAN and also Western countries to tell them about the GBA opportunities. Chairman. We have different mainland offices. Are there performance indicators for the staff at those mainland offices? I know the CMAB's offices in the mainland run seminars, et cetera. But I don't think running seminars is enough, we need indicators. So do we have concrete performance indicators? In our key performance indicators, we need to reach out to a certain number of people from businesses and also holding a certain number of promotional activities. The Promotion Center in Guangzhou will also be covered by the KPIs. Of course, you should reach out to businesses and hold activities, we need results. We need a figure on how many family offices are have established presence in Hong Kong, how many businesses got listed in Hong Kong, we need those kinds of results. I know that's work for Invest Hong Kong and the TDC. The government is now fully focusing on the economy. This means every bureau needs to think about the role it can play and it needs to set key performance indicators. Secretary.
We note Ms. Lee's point, we will consider her suggestion and we will consider those points.
Thank you. Next, Doctor Tik Chi Yun, thank you Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the election expenses of the D C general election. We spent nine hundred million dollars. In the answer to Mister Chan Young's question in CMAB oh five four, three hundred and seventy million dollars were set aside for the future elections. The election expenses are much more substantial than I imagined. Indeed, publicity was seen in every corner of Hong Kong. The advertisements were everywhere. Did we really need so much publicity across the territory? Will that be um will that backfire? The government spent a lot on publicity, do we really need so much? Of course, you may say the more publicity, the better. Well, this is not a standard, there's no cap. I hope the secretary can answer me about this. Regarding oh six two, in Mister Martin Liu's question, Doctor Stephen Wong already left office in twenty twenty-two. In the reply from the administration, there will be by-election in due course, but that is a very vague reply. In the past, it took some six months before um a by-election could be conducted. What about now? I do want a full quorum of ninety legislators serving Hong Kong. I don't want to make it feel like Doctor Stephen Wong's pose was um not important. Secretary.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Doctor Tik. Regarding the publicity of District Council general election, indeed, after we have improved the electoral system in twenty twenty-one, as I emphasized, is a very important step in implementing the principle of patriots administering Hong Kong that embodies the um principle of one country, two systems. We have already reformed the district councils and this is conducive to better livelihood in the community as well as better development of Hong Kong. It's key to these areas. We need to let members of the public know the importance of the implementation of patriots administering Hong Kong and the improved electoral system. They need to know the importance of these areas so that they will feel the incentive to take part in the elections. Different quarters of society also want us to step up publicity so that members of the public will understand the overall arrangements for a revamped electoral system or an improved electoral system. In both elections, as mentioned, we've conducted quite large scale of publicity. It was seen by all walks of life. It achieved great results. Despite an increase in the election expenses, I think they were worth every penny spent. To improve district governance, to improve the electoral system, to provide better livelihood for the people of Hong Kong, that is to enable members of the public to embrace the election, to take part in the elections. Well, Secretary, in brief, regarding by-election, yes, indeed, we need to factor in the actual situation. In the past one year or so, we have already improved the electoral system. The conduct of the District Council ordinary election received our full devotion. The schedule was tight, all of us worked tirelessly to get the job done. There wasn't any extra time for us to conduct the by-election. After the District Council election, we also needed to handle the different eventualities taking place, I mean occurring in um during the conduct of the election. We also needed to follow up on different remedial measures and enhancement measures. So right now, we have a lot on our plate and we don't have time on the by-election, but we will, depending on the schedule of our duties, to see how we can conduct the by-election in the future. Next, Doc- Mister Tong Li Te.
Thank you Chairman. I'd like to follow up on two replies. One, a question asked by Doctor Junice Ho, CMAB oh three oh. It's about ethnic minorities in Hong Kong as well as non-Chinese speaking students, NCS. On the resources given to NCS students, I hope the administration or the E O C will think how we can better help ethnic minorities in Hong Kong. We shouldn't just stop at working on anti-discrimination ordinance or learning Chinese well. Actually, this category of people can provide fresh impetus to the development potential of Hong Kong. So I hope that the secretary can work with the L W B Education Bureau and the L W B to see how we can enhance efforts in this connection. The other question is CMAB oh four four, I'd like to follow up on the reply. It's a question by Mister Martin Liu. In paragraph number four, professional services, that is construction, I represent this sector. In early twenty twenty-three, two projects for the construction of primary and secondary schools were launched in Tianhai. In the future, more projects are anticipated. Looking forward. Through competitions, we can encourage them to participate in these competitions to get an more accurate understanding of the GBA. We've had different competitions with Tianhai regarding tendering and other issues. Recently, Dong Guan also asked me to take part in it as well. But my resources are limited, it's difficult for me to take part in all projects. As for university students, it may be even easier or better for them to gain a better understanding through these competitions. So I hope the administration can provide suitable support or help to university students. Secretary questions on two fronts.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Mister Tong Li Te for your questions. I'd like to first take the question about ethnic minorities and NCS students. Indeed, as Mister Tong Li Te mentioned, in different policy bureaus in the government, there are various policies providing assistance to ethnic minorities in Hong Kong, including employment, education and so on. The H Y A B, the Education Bureau, also have different policies under their purview. The administration also attaches great importance to harmony in society as well as inclusiveness. So we want to roll out different policies to help ethnic minorities in getting a better life in Hong Kong. Ms. Linda Lam, the new chairperson of the E O C can supplement. I'll ask Ms. Linda Lam to give you more information in a moment. Regarding professional services, Mister Tong Li Te suggested that we should hold more competitions, for example. This is indeed a very good suggestion, we will actively consider this suggestion. Ms. Linda Lam, anything to add?
In brief. Thank you Chairman, we agree.
Thank you, Chairman. We agree with Mister Tong Li Te. Ethnic minorities help us solve the manpower crunch in Hong Kong. We agree that they are a dependable source of labor. So looking forward from the perspective of equal opportunities, we will help the ethnic minorities to settle into the community. We will take different approaches or measures. From primary schools and secondary schools, we need to drive home the message that students need to accept people of different nationalities. So we have a scheme in this connection. That is to encourage principals and teachers to train teachers and promote racial harmony. The scheme is racially friendly campus recognition scheme. When they have exemplary performance, they can act as role models for other schools. On the employment level. There's another scheme, racial diversity and inclusion charter for employers. Different employers and organizations are encouraged to sign this charter. Then they promise that they will promote racial harmony, social inclusiveness policies, including employing people of ethnic minorities. They also need to help them overcome language barriers. This is what we do in the workplace. In society at large. We'll hold events for the general public. For example, on the coming Sunday, there's a sports day. Actually, competitions, working out, these are very good events. That is, in a sports competition, athletes think how they can win, how they can collaborate with one another. So we have a multi-pronged approach to deal with the problem. Well, Miss Linda Lam, if you have more detailed information, you can supplement after the meeting. Well, probably Miss Linda Lam wants to show you their ambitious plans. Well, for sure, that's all right, but we need to manage our time well. Mister Martin Liu.
Thank you, Chairman. In the interest of time, I'd like to follow up on one question. That is C M A B O four three. It's close to my heart. The administration said that they had organized seminars, talks, exchange sessions on guidelines about cyber technologies. I support the work of the administration. But at the same time, I noticed there were many personal privacy leakage accidents in the past year. Quite many of them involved well-known enterprises. The P C P D also announced the personal privacy leakage report of the Cyberport last year, including um five shortcomings with some related to cybersecurity issues. We noticed deficiencies in cybersecurity safeguards in large-scale enterprises. So targeting this area and lack of awareness about cybersecurity. Will the administration depend on the scale? I mean, the scale of operation to help different enterprises to guard against cybersecurity risks? Thank you.
So this is a question about data leaks and cybersecurity preparedness. Thank you. First, we can hear from the Privacy Commissioner for personal data, Miss Ada Chong. Thank you, Chairman. I thank Mister Liu for his question. Data security, cybersecurity, those will be our priorities for the year to come. So we have a two-pronged approach in mind. One, enforcement. Two. More education and promotion. Last year, we did a survey. In November last year, we worked with the Productivity Council on a cybersecurity survey. We found out that many small and medium enterprises lacked cybersecurity awareness when compared with the larger corporations. So we want to do more targeted education and promotion. We have in mind workshops to promote the guidelines. Last November. We also launched a webpage on data security and also a data security hotline. There's an online tool about data security. Those tools, hotline, et cetera. Will help raise the cybersecurity awareness of S M Es. We also have the statutory power to handle data leakage incidents. We help firms mitigate the damage of data leakage. We also handle complaints about under-preparedness in cybersecurity. We don't want to follow up only after a data leakage incident has occurred. Even before leakage has happened, we should be proactive. We need to raise the cybersecurity awareness of firms. We need to step up education. So on this front, we will do more education and promotion. This means more talks and there will also be more audits. So that work will be ongoing this year. One point to follow up. She mentioned follow-up work. So is that in a general sense, instead of a targeted kind of education directed at different kinds of firms? There are two kinds of training. One, directed at the public, any firm can take part. And the second kind of promotion and education are targeted. That's tailor-made. So last year, we sent our staff members to businesses to work on bespoke internal training. We covered a hundred and seventeen firms. This year, such efforts will continue. We will invite businesses. Now, we have a scheme where businesses can sign up for, and they can learn more about privacy. This year, we will team up with other bodies to hold talks on cybersecurity. Thank you. Next, Miss Kam and Khan. Thank you, Chairman. O six two, a question from Mister Martin Liu and O four five, a question from Mister Ma Feng Kwok. Now for O six two. That's about the electronic poll register. At the twenty twenty three district council ordinary election, the system broke down on the election day. An interim report came out and the report pointed to the design of the system. We don't have the full report yet. So can the secretary tell us for the contractor involved? And we spent nine hundred million dollars on the D C election. Of course, we should do the publicity and promotion and we should indeed improve the logistics and we should commend the good work. But that system breakdown tarnished the experience. Does the bureau reserve the right to go after the contractor once the full report is out? This is to make sure we make good use of public money. What lessons have we learned from the system breakdown? I've heard major directions such as a more stringent monitoring system and also a better system in developing the system. We will have a digital policy office. Will systems be standardized? We have also seen other incidents such as the eye and vigilation app, which also broke down, and some other earlier incident. Relevant authorities told us they would consider getting the future Digital Policy Office to release standard guidelines. So is that in line with what you have learned from the incident about the E P R? Now, second question, O four five. There's a dedicated team on attracting businesses and talent. So do these dedicated teams work with the Office for Attracting Strategic Enterprises? So do these dedicated teams work closely with Oasis and Invest Hong Kong so that we have an integrated team in the mainland? The Financial Secretary said under the C E D B. The T D C and the Productivity Council will form a Team Hong Kong. There were thirteen mainland offices under the T D C. So will there be such a Team Hong Kong in the mainland? So two questions, one, the E P R, and second. The collaboration in the mainland between dedicated teams and Oasis. Thank you. Now, the electronic poll register. Back in twenty twenty one, we started using the E P R system. We went through tendering. We got a contractor to develop the system. Afterwards, the system was delivered to the government. So we started maintaining the system starting from that point. So after that, the contractor has nothing to do with the running of the system. A technical team at the registration and then the electoral office took over the day-to-day maintenance and running of the E P R. So to answer Miss Khan's question. The incident has nothing to do with the contractor who developed the E P R system. As we have learned from the interim report. The cause of the incident was that during a system change for the district council election. The work wasn't done right. The result was that on the election day. The system was overloaded. And that's why the system could not function. So that's broadly what happened. Miss Khan mentioned other system breakdowns during system rollout and whether lessons have been learned. For the E P R system. The E A C Electoral Affairs Commission has set out improvement recommendations in its report. One recommendation covers measures to ensure normal operation of the system. Where we fell short, we will fix that. We will also work on the mechanism. We will bring in mechanisms in the future to ensure the system's normal operation. That way, when something goes wrong, we can deal with that swiftly. Elections are important. We need to ensure that a system is robust when it's used. As for other system failures recently, the Chief Executive sets great store by those incidents. So the C E has asked the O G C I O and other government departments to ensure that in the future, when an electronic system comes out, those departments have to ensure those systems work. The C E cares about this, and we're looking at ways to step up monitoring to ensure those cyber systems work. Now about the dedicated teams to attract businesses and talent. We have mainland officers. The dedicated teams identify potential businesses and talent. And then the mainland officers reach out to those businesses and talent. We try to get those people and businesses to come here. Our mainland offices also recommends to the dedicated teams potential people and businesses to approach. Thank you. Mister Tang Fei. Thank you, Chairman. The secretary has answered the question I had in mind. C M A B. O five O, a question about the G B A Development Office. So how does this office interact with the mainland offices? Say we have a Guangzhou office. Now, I'm a member of the C P P C C member of Chongqing. In Chongqing, we also have a mainland office. A Dutch consulate generals all of a sudden left the consulate general office. Chongqing is a key city along the Yangtze River, but Chongqing is not part of the Greater Bay Area. Hong Kong into is integrating not just into the G B A but our country as a whole. So how does the G B A Development Office interact with the other mainland offices? There are other leading cities in the mainland outside the G B A. So it's about what we do about the key cities outside the G B A. Thank you. So on how we split up the tasks, let's start with the G B A. We have the G B A Promotion Office or G B A Development Office. We talk to the mainland authorities. That's the day-to-day engagement. That office also helps the Steering Group on Integration into National Development. The G B A Development Office also helps with promotion. So that's what the office do does. But that development office is in Hong Kong. For promotion, actually in the mainland cities, we have a promotion office, which is in Guangzhou. The promotion office promotes the opportunities for Hong Kong people and businesses in those mainland cities. The promotion office also tells the mainland people and businesses about opportunities in Hong Kong. We also have a mainland office in Guangzhou. That office has all along been promoting information about Hong Kong. The mainland office covers not just Guangdong, but also the Guangxi Autonomous Region and other mainland offices. So the mainland office in Guangzhou covers Guangdong, but not just Guangdong. So the work goes from our G B A Development Office, which is executed by the G B A Promotion Office, and then the mainland office in Guangzhou helps the Promotion Office with its work. Our other mainland offices also help promote Hong Kong's economic development and cultural development. So that's overall how it works. So that concludes this session. We thank the government and we also thank members for taking part. The next session starts at three forty P M. Thank you. That concludes the session here.